Why don't we get this ball rolling? Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us this afternoon for our City Council meeting. We appreciate you being here with us. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Blatt?
Here.
Thank you. We'll jump to Agenda Item Number Two. Pocatello City Council will discuss the possibility of reinstating an ordinance regarding standards for face coverings for individuals when they're in public places within the city of Pocatello. Now, before we get discussing that, I want to make it very clear that this is a discussion, council. This is not a public hearing. This is not an ordinance. We're not voting on an ordinance. We are discussing it amongst the council on whether or not to bring an ordinance forward, and that is that. The public, we would love to continue to hear from you. We've heard from a number of you via email and things, and that is perfectly okay to do. So that being said, I just want to make sure that everybody knows and understands, this meeting today, we are not instituting any ordinances. We are not doing anything. We are here to get direction from the council on what to do and what not to do. If the desire is to prepare an ordinance, we can. If the desire to wait, we can. If the desire to do whatever, it's up to you, council. So with that, then I will turn the floor to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham?
I'd like to read a brief statement if I could.
Okay.
Well, here we are again, engaged in a conversation about an issue that deeply divides our community. I doubt that whatever is decided today will satisfy more than half of Pocatello's residents. Our nation's now been contending with the COVID-19 virus for a year and a half. Various jurisdictions, including Pocatello, have used mask mandates, social distancing, hand washing, quarantine, and vaccination to try to control the virus, yet here we are again with increasing reports of victims. Anyone who thinks the COVID-19 virus is going away forever is living with their head in the sand. Just like other infectious diseases, it will be with us for many years, probably until it mutates into a more harmless form, and even then, there will always be some people more susceptible to the virus. In the beginning, we all hoped a vaccine would be developed that would offer immunity. Many of us took the vaccine before it passed the FDA rigorous testing, and the vast majority of those patients suffered little or no side effects and did not contract the disease. Yesterday, the FDA officially authorized the Pfizer vaccine, ending the controversy over the safety of the vaccination, at least in my mind. I hope the holdouts get vaccinated and can be added to the goal of 70% to 80% vaccinations needed to reach the herd immunity standard needed to better control the infection rate. We're being told our hospitals are nearing their capacity to handle COVID patients, yet I've not seen hospitalization rates, COVID patient bed counts, ICU capacity, or ventilator usage this time. What I have seen is a list of 146 job openings at Port of Medical Center. With that many job vacancies, it is no wonder the staff is stressed. Perhaps the hospitals should consider bumping wages to attract sufficient employees to handle the patient demand. Since our jurisdiction is only Pocatello, I have also not seen the number of patients with Pocatello addresses. I know these statistics are being accumulated because I asked for a Pocatello count a couple of weeks ago, and it was provided. Any ordinance we might propose will only affect Pocatello residents and those who choose to visit our city. Any decisions will not have any force in Inchem, McCammon, Lava Hot Springs, Downey, Aramoche, or the rural areas of Bannock County. How confusing will that be to visitors or even our own residents as they cross jurisdictional boundaries? And while I'm talking about confusion, let's talk about the action taken by School District 25. Is it right that the Pocatello City Council override the action of the school district trustees to leave the decision to wear masks in the hands of the families? District 25 schools in Chubbick will not be affected by any action we take. I think it's time we let responsible citizens make the decisions necessary for their best health outcome on their own. If a citizen has a high-risk health problem, then they should take whatever action they feel necessary to protect themselves. Wear a mask, quarantine, sanitize, social distance, get a vaccination, those are your choices, but be prepared to accept the consequences of your decisions. Last Friday, the father-in-law of one of my nieces died of COVID after about three weeks of hospitalization. His son works in the local hospital, but this 74-year-old Vietnam veteran refused to be vaccinated, and that was his choice. One of my greatest concerns is the fear the masks raise in the minds and hearts of our youngest citizens. If they're told they must wear a mask to prevent infection by this virus, and then they hear a read about the COVID infection rate and deaths, are we not causing them to unnecessarily fear for their lives with this daily reminder? I will not vote to impose another mask mandate. We didn't enforce the prior ordinance in any meaningful way, and I doubt this will change by reinstating the ordinance. After a year and a half of often contentious debate over masks, vaccines, and statistics, it's time we recognize the nanny state should stay out of our lives in this matter. Let citizens and businesses make their own decisions. We can encourage vaccination, masks, and all the other precautions, but let's not go down the road of mandates. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I can appreciate your enthusiasm here, but let's let everybody finish. That's not, we're not here for applause and things like that.
Come on.
We'll go ahead and let everybody else finish. Thank you.
What was your name again, sir?
Brian Blatt, the mayor of the city of Pocatello.
No.
Oh, Rick Cheatham.
Rick, thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
So there again, there again, we're not going to do that, because if I need to, we'll just clear the council chambers out so that we can have the discussion. This discussion is among here. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel.
We pay your salary. Okay.
Linda?
No, go ahead. I just wish we weren't here again. I just want to say that, like all of you, I am really, really tired of COVID, and like all of you, I am really tired of masks. You know, we all are, but our numbers are going back up. And, you know, I look at our responsibility as a council, and I've read the law, I've read, you know, what it is that we are supposed to do in situations like this, and this is an issue of public safety, and it is our responsibility to address issues of public It's our responsibility to protect the public when we have a situation like this where we can do things to protect the public. We have lots of laws that are about public safety issues and protecting the public. We all follow speed limits. We drive on the right side of the road. We do things all the time. We wear shirts and shoes in restaurants. Those are about public safety and about public health, and we don't question them. To me, this is not an issue of freedom. I absolutely believe in freedom and liberty, and that is the most beautiful thing about the country that we live in, is that we are a free country. However, freedom doesn't mean that you get to do whatever you want whenever you want. If what you're doing harms someone else, or potentially harms someone else, then that freedom does have some limits on it. We can't do things in a society. We have to sort of work together to do what's best for everybody. So for me, what this really boils down to is an issue of compassion, and that we are just compassionate and kind to our fellow citizens and show that we care about them. It's really troubling, I mean, difficult, I'll say, about this mask mandate this time. Last time, when we were considering this, all the local entities, governing entities and public institutions, were all doing the same thing. This time, we have a situation where we have one that is doing something different. They haven't said that that's their final decision. They did say that they would look in, I'm talking about the school board, of course, and they are an elected body, as we are an elected body, and they have their responsibility or their area of focus, as we have ours. But they have said they would revisit the issue if they needed to. So, but it complicates things that they're doing something different. ISU has reinstituted a mask mandate. So Southeast Idaho Public Health, the ones that we really look to for their guidance, are strongly recommending this. All the medical professionals that I talked to are strongly recommending this. I mean, we receive letters that are just begging us to do something because we are understaffed in our hospitals, and a lot of that is because people have walked away from those jobs because they're just so stressed that they can't, they don't want to be in that situation anymore. So I just come back to the idea of compassion, that this is really an issue of compassion and that we show compassion for each other, for our healthcare workers, for the people on the front lines. We've received emails also from our first responders asking us to do this to protect them. They're the ones who serve the public, who respond to you in emergencies. It's their safety that's on the line as well. One other thing I did want to say, there's a lot of emails talking about children, that children do not contract or spread the COVID virus. However, everything that I've read about the Delta variant, it says that that's not true. This new variant, children are susceptible to it, and children are actually dying from it. So, you know, the idea that children, you know, are immune to this is, you know, not true from what I'm reading. So I think we need to take care of them, too. This is just a very, very difficult decision. I don't in any way want to override another body of elected officials. They've made a decision, and I think, you know, they have the authority to make the decision within their purview, as do we, and so it becomes complicated now that we're talking about different things or doing different things and different responses. I also have issues with passing an ordinance that can't be fully enforced. That's always a problem as well. However, I've seen in the past, when we passed an ordinance, that it did up compliance in the community, because there are some people that will comply if it's a law. So I'm really torn by all of these things, and it's just a difficult decision. But however, I decide to vote, it is absolutely about what is best for the city and about showing compassion for my fellow community members and about taking my responsibility seriously, according to the law, to protect public safety. So those are the things that I'm really looking at, and I take those very seriously. But it's a difficult decision.
Thank you. Tharia?
So I did have something written, but I'm just going to speak off the cuff. Last time, I was very, I was reluctantly supportive of the mask mandate because we had the hospitals and stuff begging us to put it in, and so since I'm not a health expert, I went ahead and I supported, and I went ahead with the recommendation, and so I supported the mask mandate. This time, I haven't heard from any of those entities, and so I'm not a fan. That being said, I don't believe, I don't believe you can legislate compassion. You can't legislate things like that. People are, they're either empaths or they're not. They're either compassionate or they're not. They're either considerate or they're not. I can't convince people to wear a mask if they don't want to. I can't convince people to get vaccinated if they don't believe in the vaccines, and I really don't think it's my place to tell people what decisions to make with their children. I'm a mom, and when my son was little, my kids were little, anybody thought they were going to tell me how to parent my kid, and mama bear came out. And so I'm not going to tell people how to raise their children. I don't think that that's my place. So I'm not going to be in favor of a mask mandate this time because I don't think that the situation is the same. We have an option. I said then. I will support this only until anybody who wants a vaccine can walk into Walmart and get it for free, and that is now. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to stick to what I said back then, and I won't be supporting a mask mandate.
At this point in time, I cannot support reinstating the mask mandate. That does not mean that I don't take COVID D seriously. That does not mean that I won't be reinstating practices that I choose in an effort to protect But what I choose to do is going to be my choice, and as Councilman Cheatham said, no matter what decision any, any, none of us makes individually, somebody won't be happy with it, and I understand that, and take responsibility for the choice of not currently support reinstating the mask mandate and extend an invitation to anybody on either side of the issue who wants to talk about it with me individually. I am more than happy to talk with them and explain in detail how I came to my decision. I promised that when I ran for council, that I guaranteed that not everybody in the community would agree with me on every vote that I took, and I also guaranteed that I would talk directly and personally with anybody who wanted to talk to me about the choices I made.
But two that haven't spoken yet.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I know a lot of people are afraid. Some people are afraid that they might contract COVID. Some people are afraid of government overreach. Some people are afraid because their neighbors don't behave or act or have the same opinion that they do. I hope that what we can do is respect everyone else in our community and not let this become a point of contention or an opportunity to attack other people. That's, that's really my hope. I know the council is already aware. I did not vote for the mask ordinance last time, and I, my opinion on that has not changed. I still have concerns with it for some of the reasons that have already been expressed by others. So my opinion has not changed. I do not want to pursue an ordinance at this time. I just hope that everyone will, will be civil and respectful as we move forward from this meeting.
Okay. Roger?
This is Roger.
You're in.
I think it's real important for us to reiterate that masks do help in the containment of COVID spread.
That hasn't changed.
Well, you can take whatever opinion you want, but the facts are, it does help.
So, so, excuse me, Roger. There again, please do not interrupt, because if there's another interruption when one of the council members is speaking, I'm going to have you removed. Please do not interrupt. Thank you.
It goes by the same principle that we've always been taught to cover our mouth or top into our sleeve, because that helps to contain the spread of germs and viruses. And masks do work. At church, I tried to blow a candle out with my mask on. I had no effect on the candle at all. That told me, that told me that it was really containing what I was putting out. Those are realities. We have had, for years and years and years, our medical profession wearing masks to protect us when we go in for surgeries and procedures. We don't want them to change that because we don't want to come out with something different than what we went in for, and so that's an important thing to remember. Masks do not have the element of protecting us from everything. They are one of the tools in the toolbox, just like social distancing, hygiene, staying isolated, all those things work. And if you don't want to believe that, just look at where people meet and congregate, that's where the super-spreading events occur. So I really think that it's important for us to keep this tool available to use. I saw some stuff that the epidemiologists for the state of Idaho put out, and they're expecting this COVID to keep building and building through October in Idaho. And if that's true, we're going to have some hard times in front of us. So I just trust the professionals. I go to them for my help. I wouldn't be alive today if I hadn't trusted the professionals at other times. I still, I still protect, I believe in them. The Food and Drug Administration is one that when we get E. coli bacteria or salmonella or something like that, we trust them to pull stuff off the shelf. I still think we need to take their guidance. They are the people who work every day in that industry, and they have something to share with us that is far beyond our potential to do ourselves.
So I'm just going to say, just put a few comments out there. Everybody might be interested, maybe, maybe not. Some don't believe in masks, some do. I'll tell you, I think a mask is important, and I think it's an important piece to the puzzle, because as I watched numbers climb in the past, Pocatello stayed fairly flat, and nowhere else had a mask mandate but Pocatello, and they stayed flat. So you can say what you, you can say, you've read a story that says they don't work, I can show you stories that say they do. I don't know where the middle, where it is really comes down to, but at the end of the day, I know in Pocatello, we were able to contain and stay flat where everybody else in the state was going up and, and things were bouncing around for them. And so I agree, I believe masks work. I don't think they're the fix-all, and I don't think that that's the case at all. I also recognize that, that we can get shots, but I see a lot of people have not decided to do that, and that's, that's, there again, I'm not interested in mandating whether or not you get a COVID shot or not, but I am very interested in, in, in the public safety and public health. I'll just give you, because I have spoken to the hospital. I know Councilwoman Ortega had not. I have, for the last two to three weeks, there's 14 to 16 COVID patients in the hospital. They're not completely full. They're not empty. There's about 14 to 16 regularly on the, over the last two to three weeks. Most people that are there, that end up in the hospital, have not been vaccinated. 80 to 90% of the people that are, go into the hospital have not been vaccinated, and here in town, anybody that has been put on a ventilator has not been vaccinated, and so vaccinations work. Right now, we're not in dire straits in Pocatello. However, Boise is maxed out. They don't have a bed in the Boise Valley. Coeur d'Alene does not have a bed in their valley to be able to put somebody in. So if you watch, the same thing happened before, and it will come across the state probably, that's the prediction. I don't know if that's happened or not. They, the hospital strongly, strongly, strongly supports and recommends getting a vaccination, getting vaccinated. If, they said masks do work regardless of what people think, and they strongly would recommend a mask mandate as well, if they could, if that could be the case, but that it is what it is. Let me just get down here. I spoke with the, the Southeast Idaho Public Health District. They anticipate 30,000 cases per week in October, which is 2,500 cases locally. They anticipate that happening. They took a, they took three different, 13 different models, put them together, tried to get it back, and tried to get everything so that it leveled out to get a really good prediction, and they know it's just a prediction, but they did that. They predicted the 30,000 per week, 2,500 per day, I'm sorry, not per week here, 2,500 per day throughout the state. Actuals, the thing that they look at, because they predicted this a few weeks ago, the actuals and the predictions are exactly dead-on right now. So if nothing happens and everything stays the way it is, we see that that, where we're headed right now is a concern. Another concern that they have is school is back in session. We're going to have people there. University, they're back in sessions as well. People have relaxed a lot when it comes to wearing a mask, and I'll tell you, I sure have, because I don't like wearing them, but I have. I've definitely relaxed that as we've gone through. Science and actual use proves that masks work. Now, that's what they, that's, that's the, the Southeast Idaho Public Health, that's the numbers. If we want to believe them or not, that's completely up to everybody, I guess, if you want to believe them or not. I would hope that those members don't come about. I hope that they're wrong, but right now, everything shows that they are. I do have a story, though, that I want to tell, and then I'll turn it over. I have a neighbor, she's about a 90-year-old neighbor, that got vaccinated, and she ended up getting the virus. I have a family that is absolutely adamantly, another neighbor family, that is adamantly against wearing a mask, adamantly against vaccine, and that family got the virus while taking care of the 90-year-old lady gave her the virus. She was not admitted to the hospital. The family had three different people admitted, two of them on a ventilator, and one of them is still there, and that was three weeks ago. So I guess the moral of the story is, is if you don't want to wear a mask, I would highly encourage you to get vaccinated. I would highly encourage that because it does work. It's been proven around the world to work, and it truly, truly does work. So with that, kind of just going to let it go from there, and the council, I just am looking for direction from the council. Councilwoman?
This might be a legal question. Sorry. So I can certainly empathize with first responders. If first responders...
Speak up.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
They can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
You're turning around to our attorney.
Sorry.
Speak this way, yeah.
All right. Okay. I can certainly empathize with our first responders, because they are in a position where if there's an emergency call, they're calling in life, and their purpose is to My question to the city attorney behind me is what might be possible relative to, certainly a request can be made. First responders show up, I would think that if a first responder said to me or my family, "Look, we want to come in, we want to help, we also," without getting into an argument, "would you, would you please mask up, and by the way, we have masks?" I would hope that it would be that simple. I really do, because if we're talking about choice, then I would hope that we would allow our first responders to have some control over a circumstance where they are duty-bound to show up. responders to have some control over a circumstance where they are duty-bound to show up. They can't just not go there. What I don't know beyond that request, and trying to make that information available throughout the community so that people understand and are prepared for that request from our first responders, should it come. Beyond that, I don't know whether there is anything further that could be put in place. And that's my question to you, city attorney.
So is the question...
Yes. For example, I mean, I can't imagine, but that's why I'm asking, just for me to be clear, but also for members of the public to be clear. I am assuming that a first responder cannot choose. Well, I don't know. If that first responder believes that their health and welfare is going to be put in jeopardy and makes a simple request, and that request is refused, what choice, if any, does the first responder have?
I could maybe try to answer that if you want, or you can.
I'm not sure it's as much of a legal question as a policy question within the first responder's agency.
So I think, I think the answer to that question is if you're in danger, and if you're hurting, and a first responder is called, the first responder is going to administer to that person regardless if they put a mask on or not.
And that wasn't my question.
Well, but the people around, when you go in their house and they say, "Well, you put a mask on," and they say, "No, the first responder is not leaving," the first responder is going to go.
I understand. I think our city attorney said that it would be a matter of policy within the first responder agency, if I heard you correctly.
Well, I think the question was, what, if anything, can be done? There can be a policy about requesting people put a mask on before they're treated, if that's what they decided to do. But I absolutely agree with the mayor. If they respond to an emergency, they're going to treat regardless of the mask being or not.
Right. I understand. I made that point. But I guess what I'm looking for here is what, how the public and also the city can support our first responders if they personally feel. So we could, for example, really make it aware in the mayor's, make people aware in the mayor's newsletter, that please, 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 if a first responder says, you know, "Here are our masks, would you folks please mask up?" That rather than, you know, make a big to-do about it, I would hope that the public would be prepared, understand that our first responders are going into situations over which they have no control, to try to do good. And I would hope that our public would be so informed that they would say, "I get it. You know, yes, that's a simple request, I'm willing to comply with it." So.
Okay.
It seems like we've heard from a majority of the council that they were not interested in pursuing an instruction to staff to prepare an ordinance at this time. So I feel like we've accomplished the intent of this meeting and...
Okay. So I do, I have one request, though, before we wrap it up, and I'm okay with that. If the council's comfortable with where we are and what we're doing, I do have one request to the public. When you see somebody wearing a mask, don't attack them. When you see, when, when, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Vice versa.
Hold on, I was just trying to get there, if you'd let me finish. If somebody's wearing a mask and somebody isn't, don't attack them for not wearing a mask. That show the respect to others, and that show respect to everybody out there regardless of their choice of what we're doing here and stuff. We can agree or we can disagree, it really doesn't matter. But if it really is a choice, let's not attack. And let's not, let's not treat people worse because they have a mask on or because they don't have a mask on. That would be my request. I'm not taking questions or statements, thank you, though. With that, are we good?
I would also say there were two parts to whether we would meet. The first part we're meeting on today was that we climbed over the 15 per 10,000. But the second part of it is, if we get to 30 cases per 10,000 for three days running, we're supposed to meet then too.
So that's a, that's a good question. If this meeting, Jared, does this meeting meet the requirement, or is that requirement, if we have 30 cases per 10,000 people for three days, do we need to meet again?
So this meeting was pursuant to the motion that was made in April, that's correct, under the 15 cases per 10,000 for 14 consecutive days. I guess I would look to you, Councilmember Ray, as you're the one that made the motion, whether you intended for there to be a separate meeting if we hit the 30 number.
Yes, because it was vice versa, we would have...
And there is an or in there, so I would think it would be appropriate to have another meeting if we meet that threshold.
Okay, so if that is the case, and that is the desire of the council, if that does happen, I'm trying to find the case count for today. And today was 32.2, I think, was today's case count. Active case rate. So we were at 20, 24, we dropped to 22, we bounced up to 26 or 7, and then today, which is Monday, which counts Saturday and Sunday. Oh, today's Tuesday. So yesterday's count, I'm sorry, yesterday's count, we don't know what today's is. Yesterday's count was 32, 32.2 or .4 cases. And so very easily, if that is the case, then we could be having another meeting at the end of this week.
I won't be interested in that.
Wouldn't Monday's number be all three days, though?
No, it wouldn't, because we are talking about Monday through Friday, and so they don't count on Saturday and Sunday, and so Monday's count there. So theoretically, if Saturday, Sunday made it bounce up, theoretically, what would happen is tomorrow they'll drop down, or today they would drop down. Councilwoman Stevens, thank you for coming up, but we're not going to take any comments. So thank you for stepping up here.
I just have one question.
No, I'm not taking that question. Thank you.
What kind of town hall meeting is this?
I'm wondering if... I'm hoping that we can get the numbers reports. I haven't had a chance to think this through as thoroughly as I would have liked to, but when we get our numbers reports, and I realize I can call and do this individually, but I think it would be perhaps something that might be important for this body collectively, to know how many children, in the case count, how many of those are children not eligible for vaccinations? How many are unvaccinated adults eligible for the vaccine? How many of the breakthrough, so-called breakthrough cases?
The CDC has stopped counting the breakthrough cases. So we don't have it.
So there again, there again, please let the council have the discussion.
And how many of the so-called breakthrough cases that required any extensive care occurred in people with other underlying conditions, who were already vulnerable for other reasons? I would appreciate that information, and as I said, I understand that I can make those calls myself, but I also think that would be valuable data for the council as a body.
So Councilwoman Stevens, what I can do, I agree, and I think she's absolutely right. I don't think they keep track of the breakthrough cases, but I will ask if they still have those here. The CDC may not, but the Southeast Idaho Public Health might. We will see if we can get the number of children and the unvaccinated adults that...
Because you mentioned that already, so they appear to be...
Yeah, they've got those numbers. I don't know about the children, and I don't know about the breakthrough cases there that are already vulnerable. We can definitely find out. Councilwoman Ortega?
So I'm just going to go on record as saying that I'm not going to be interested in another meeting if the numbers are 30 for the next three days. Because the bottom line for me at this point is this. Some people choose to smoke, I don't. Some people choose not to drink, I do. Some people like to eat jelly doughnuts every day, I don't. It's not my place at this point in time to tell people. I can't tell people how to raise their children. So if someone's child, and I've lost a son, so I know what that, the hole that that leaves in your soul, but it's still not my place to do that, to tell somebody what choices to make for their children. It's just, I don't feel like it's my place, I'm not comfortable with it. So I'm just not going to be interested, in my opinion. We can have a meeting, with all due respect to Roger, we can have a meeting, but my position is not going to change if the numbers are 35, or 45, or 55. It's still everybody's choice. People die of heart attacks, obesity, people die of obesity, heart attacks, cancer, all kinds of horrendous things, that most of them could possibly be prevented if we made better choices for ourselves, myself excluded. But if everybody did everything perfectly well, then, you know, we'd be living in, you know, La La Land with unicorns and rainbows. That was for you. But, so I'm just, my opinion in the next, in three days, or on Friday, is not going to be any different. I just want to put that on the record.
I think we should have a meeting on Friday so we can rally more troops.
What about those who can't?
Why do you want to?
I'm joking.
Have a meeting on Friday, we'll have a lot more back.
I agree that I'm not interested in having another meeting later this week, or is there a way, and I don't know what the appropriate way would be to do this, if the majority of the council is not interested in that? Do we make, do we need to make another motion to override the other motion, or can we just give that at this time?
So I would suggest the council discuss it now, that's why we're here, as a special meeting based on that motion. Because like I said before, a fair reading of that motion back in April is that this meeting would cover that instance as well. So it's really up to the council.
Okay. So I know Claudia's already said, I've already said I'm not interested in meeting again, and I guess we need to make it an actual motion if other people agree with that?
You can if you would like to.
I don't, I don't know if we need another motion. If you can read it both ways, I just know that it was and/or...
Yeah, but the meeting was, this meeting satisfied the motion. There's a fair argument to be made that it would be required under the 30 cases, but there's just as fair an argument to say this meeting satisfied that motion, so it's entirely up to the council.
So then if we reach a consensus, we don't have to make a motion? Is that what you're saying? Jared?
Yeah, I mean, a motion is the most formal way to show a consensus, but yeah, if you as a group decide another meeting is not necessary, I'm sure the mayor won't call me.
I'm good with consensus. Rick?
I think if we need it on the record.
Okay. I move that we don't... How am I going to raise my motion to not?
So you would move that, it's your interpretation that another meeting isn't necessary if we meet the 30-day, 30 cases for three days in a row threshold?
That's my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ortega, and a second by Adamson. Connie, can you call her on?
Ortega?
Well, you made the motion.
I know.
A yes goes, meaning that you don't fulfill another meeting is necessary.
Okay, yes. Well, I just didn't want to mess it up.
Right, I just don't want to.
Yes. Yes.
Ray?
I feel it's too important to conclude meetings, you know.
Tatum?
Yes.
Larry?
I'm not sure that it will make any difference, but I guess I will...
Speak up.
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, and so the intent of the motion in April is it's a consensus of the council that this meeting has satisfied that motion. And with that, thank you, thank you very much for attending. That means there will not be, there will not be another meeting if there's 30 or more cases for three days. If there will be, if there's another meeting on a mask mandate, the council will request it as we move forward, and we'll go from there.
We couldn't hear who voted no.
So Rick, Roger, and Linda voted no. They would like to have...
No, no, no.
Not Rick, not Rick. Roger and Linda voted no, and the other four voted yes. Thank you very much for attending. Thanks for being here. With that, we are adjourned.